Dale is absent tonight. He, Joyce has been sick a little bit and Dale is now encountering some health issues. So keep him in your prayers. He's going to go in for some tests tomorrow, so just kind of keep him in your prayers. He'll be absent tonight.
Miller?
Here.
Wannick?
Yes.
Here.
May 2015 regular and special meeting and it's presented for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes presented for both meetings.
Good. And then we're at second. This is in our meeting minutes of last month. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Wannick?
Yes.
Miller? Hughes?
Yep.
Motion carried.
Did the Treasurers' report for May 2015? Consideration, possible action? Should we do that now or?
I'll go ahead and talk about the Treasurers' report.
Okay.
And then I'll leave it to those of you who don't.
Okay.
On the Treasurers' report, we're looking at the activity of May and the current fiscal year. We are sixty-six percent through the year. One thing that might look a little unusual is on the back page or opposite of the bank reconciliation in bank accounts, where we have all the funds on the left and in the middle. Under the revenues and year-to-date receipts for the library, it has forty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-five, which shows the percentage as five hundred and seventy-seven percent. That is very high because we've had a claim for doing the roof of the library that was not anticipated to fall this year. And we had the insurance proceeds come through in the month of May and the repair work is actually in the bills for tonight's meeting. So we didn't receive unexpected revenues from other activities in the library. It was an insurance claim or insurance reimbursement. So that's why it looks a little funny. Going into the lottery fund, which is the next item on the agenda, the North Ball Field improvements are now complete. The agri line is in place and is working well. And as we previously discussed in our February meeting, the city learned that we were not awarded a Nebraska game and parks grant with the land and water conservation funds. And even though ball fields were listed as one of the eligible activities, our application just wasn't selected. We also discussed how our lottery fund at the end of 2014 had higher than usual receipts and was just a wonderful surprise. And we decided that we'd like to make this ball fields improvement possible. And we continued with that project. One of the items that you have is a little spreadsheet showing the cost of the field. And the cost of the field to do the North Field was twenty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. The Ball Roosters have pledged sixty-five hundred dollars, which includes five thousand of their proceeds that would normally go to supplies, along with a fifteen hundred dollar grant they received from Arault County, which brings the balance of the project to sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars. In February, we discussed using the lottery funds for fifteen thousand three hundred plus any shortfall. And I'd like to ask the council for their consideration to make that transfer from the lottery fund to the general fund for the sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty-one on the ball fields improvements of the North Field.
I'll make a motion to transfer lottery to general.
I'll second.
Motion by Hughes, second by Wannick, to transfer sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars from the lottery fund to the general fund for the ball fields improvements.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Wannick?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yep.
One other item we had was on the Mill Bridge. When the fundraising for the Mill Bridge began a couple of years ago, donations started coming in to the Neill Industrial Development Board and we were allowed to use the 501(c)(3) status. The fundraising began before the city received a very generous and anonymous donation of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That anonymous donation was used for the jump span to reconnect the Mill Bridge to the roof and are the funds that are being used for the painting project as well. So no property taxes have been used to restore the Mill Bridge, the jump span, the painting, any part of that project. Now with the painting project selected as far as a bid and a contractor, we have the final repair in place. I'd like to ask if the council would consider making a transfer from the Neill Industrial Development Board, making a request. They have one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars that were donations given before the rest of the project got underway. And I'd like to ask if we could request a transfer from the Neill Industrial Development Board to the city general fund.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Stephanie made a motion to second it, move the money. Roll call.
Wannick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurers' report.
I think while we're looking at the Treasurers' report, there was some discussion about the electric making a lot of profit. And I think, I don't know where that came from, but I don't think it's right. And there is a lot of money in the accounts and maybe then it could explain what some of that money is used for and why we can't use it.
Okay. Going to the front page of the Treasurers' report where it does list the bank accounts and the balances, I'm going to refer to what's on the right-hand side of that page. When we go down to where it says electric investments restricted, it shows one hundred ninety-one thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. And also up above where it says general investments and restricted, the third line down, of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and eight. Those are investments or CDs that are held as collateral for our agreement with me for our electric power. So they are restricted to being held and tied up in a CD or an investment. Right underneath that where it says electric investments unrestricted, fifty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Our main agreement used to be four hundred thousand and it was dropped recently to three hundred and fifty thousand. And so there was one CD that no longer had to be restricted and that is the CD that was in place. The electric generation revenue bond where it shows ninety-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars, this is an accumulation every month we make a transfer from the Neill Electric Cash to this account so that when our principal and our interest on the generation bond comes forward, the funds are automatically withdrawn by ACH for that bond payment. So these are not funds that are available, they're actually used throughout the year to make those bond payments. The next line is the electric generation reserve CD of two hundred and seven thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars. That is a CD that must stay in place as long as we have a bond on the generation plant. That's by ordinance, by agreements, or by the restrictions that these funds must be designated and separately stated. So the amount of money that we work off of or operate off of is under electric cash of four hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and seventy-two at this time.
Any other discussion? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurers' report that's presented.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion to approve the Treasurers' report. Roll call.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wannick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number five is the 2013-14 fiscal. Fiscal. Fiscal, alright. Years Audit Report. Lori Olson.
Good evening. I usually don't have this big of a crowd, so. Yeah, my name is Lori Olson. I'm a partner with the Animal Shelter Company, the CPA firm, and I'm located in O'Leary. Done this audit for a while, maybe six, eight years, I can't remember for sure. But anyway, a couple of you are, can you hear me okay? A couple of you are new, so I'll just highlight you to a couple of the major things that I think you should be aware of. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going over the detail because you have a copy of the audit and you've had it for a couple of weeks. If you have questions, please, you know, interrupt me or if you have questions afterwards, please feel free to call me because we're actually engaged or hired by the board and so I would gladly respond to you individually if you're more comfortable doing that. So with that said, on pages one, two, three is our independent auditor's report and that's what you pay us for. The rest of this report is your financial statements, which we assist putting that together, but what you really pay us for is our report on the financial statements. This rather lengthy report is actually an unmodified report, which is a good thing. That's the highest level report, so there's no modifications in it, which again is a good thing. Beyond that, I'm going to just skip around a little bit and point out some highlights. The first section of the financial statements are an overview, then there's some notes, and then there's some supplemental schedules at the back. I want to have you jump over to page thirty-four. On page thirty-four is a very condensed summary of the entire village operations. I'll wait till you get there. And what that is, it's a strictly cash basis report of the budget in the column one, the actual figures in column two, and the depth of variance in column three. As you can see, your expenditures were a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars under budget, which was about, probably about two percent. So it was very close. You didn't look at job budgeting this year. The revenues over the expenditures for the year, which is the third number from the bottom, the middle column, was six hundred and seventy-six thousand, but that included, I think, about a half a million dollars of FEMA money that you actually paid for the improvements a year before. So it was pretty stable the year, all in all. I just wanted you to see that to start off with, so that's, like I said, a very highly condensed summary. Other comments that I do have is on the notes to the financial statements. And you can read these yourself, so I'm not going to read them note by note, but a couple of noteworthy things I bring your attention to. On page twenty-seven is a nice summary of the debt that the city owes. And as you can see on page twenty-seven, that top section are the general obligation bonds that are, that the city had outstanding at the end of September of 2014, was two million and eighty-five thousand. And general obligation bonds are backed by the full faith of the government, so you have to pay those regardless. Revenue bonds were two point six six five million and those are all backed by the revenues of your electric fund. And so you have to maintain sufficient cash flow and reserves in your electric fund to be able to pay those bonds on a timely basis. And there's also some, not only reserve requirements, but ratios that you have to maintain as far as net income in the, in the electric fund especially. So that's part of the reason why the electric fund has some more substantial cash reserves than maybe some of the other funds. The other thing that I'd like you to look at is on page, and page twenty-seven and following is just more information about the debt. On page thirty is a summary of the changes in your capital assets and what those are are your equipment, your infrastructure, and so on, if you have a business, it would be your depreciation schedule. And the top section is the governmental activities. That's your capital assets invested in nonutility fund equipment and infrastructure. That amount net of depreciation increased a little over a hundred thousand dollars this year. And then the business type activities are your utility fund assets and those increased about three hundred thousand after, about three hundred thousand of depreciation. So you didn't have significant capital additions in addition to maintaining a decent cash flow this year. The rest of this, I think I'm going to let you look at and if you have questions, you can ask them now if you've had a chance to look through or if you want me to go over anything more specifically or in depth, I can sure do that too.
From what you see, from what you see of other cities, are we in line? Are we doing a good job of what needs to be done to represent the citizens of our community?
Yes, I mean, I have some cities that have some cash flow problems and I have some cities that have a lot more cash than you have. I'd say you're probably in the middle somewhere. Yeah, now there's, I was just talking to a city today of the increasing demands for, you know, things that you don't have control over, that you have to fund, and the decreasing state revenues. So I think it's good to have a healthy cash reserve. You know, the utility fund cash flows can vary quite a bit if you have a really, you don't sell a lot of water some years, or maybe you get caught a little bit on some of your electric rates. So it's good to have a good cash flow there. And also I did make a note here that you're actually unassigned, nonutility fund cash is about four hundred and eighty, five hundred thousand dollars, which it looks like you have a lot of money, but a lot of it is restricted for various, you know, economic development and utility things. So about five hundred of it is nonrestricted and not assigned. And so that's about, I think, a three-month cash reserve for your general fund and that's fairly normal. It's not excessive and it's not too low.
Good.
And I don't design the format of the audit report, that's set by standard, so if it's intimidating and you want to go through it in detail, I'd sure sit down with you.
I thought it was very informative. There was a lot to be found in, a lot of figures, and I think this is public record for anybody who wants to view it.
It is, if anyone wants to look at it, yes.
And that would help them to also understand how the city operates, which I think is very important.
And we did have it done at the end of January. I just had tax season and various conflicts and the needy days, so I'm sorry it took me a while to get here.
No, that's fine. And we had many questions to ask at the last meeting about what we do with our money, where it goes, how it comes, what we do with it. So this answers a lot of questions, so this is available to the public, so anytime you want to come look at it, you're more than welcome.
And actually, the audit reports are posted on the state auditor's website too. I'm not sure they have the fourteen ones on there, but they are posted and the full amount is posted there.
Thank you.
Thank you again and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you.
We need to approve the thirteen, fourteen fiscal years audit report.
I'll make a motion to second that.
Good.
I'll second.
Stephanie? Roll call. Well, is there any other discussion? Any comments? Any folks have a question? Okay. Any discussion? Board? Council? Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Wannick?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number six. Thanks Lori, appreciate all the work. Informational presentation from the Animal Shelter Northeast Nebraska. This is Cindy Hurley. And welcome.
Okay. Can everyone hear me? Yeah? Okay. My name is Cindy Hurley. I'm with the Animal Shelter Northeast Nebraska. I am, just a little history on myself. I've been with the organization for about a year and a half now. I'm not originally from this area. I moved here about two years ago from Texas. So this is my kind of weather. Not used to the whole forty degree in May thing, so I'm excited to see that it's now, you know, my home, my home temperatures. Little history on the organization. We've been in existence since nineteen ninety-five, just completely run through foster care. And so what that means is just volunteers in the community will open up their homes for animals that either are stray off the street or are just needing to be rehomed. We do not take in a lot of strays just because we do not have a facility. And so, and a lot of times, we don't take in strays because we don't have any contracts with, with, with any of the, any of the cities, but we, the only strays that we take in are strays that we know were dumped. And so those are, that's kind of our, I guess, motto. But we have been in existence since nineteen ninety-five and just taking in, taking in animals through foster care. And so that's just fosters in the community open up their homes and rehabilitate these animals. I am the only paid staff person, so I do the job of about three to four, to five to ten different people. But we are a hundred percent volunteer driven. And so operationally, we are run by volunteers, which is absolutely incredible. These people amaze me on a daily basis. If you call the number that's listed on the form that I left there, it is answered by a volunteer and they will get back to you and they will talk you through the whole process of surrendering or adopting an animal. They will do the intake, they will do the adoption, they will do absolutely everything, which is just absolutely incredible to me. And so we are, we are at a whole bunch of events and we do get calls on a daily basis with people needing to surrender their animals. A lot of times, a lot of the niche that we are kind of in is a lot of elderly people moving into nursing homes that have had these animals for ten years. And a lot of times cats, dogs have a good five, six, maybe even another ten years on them and they don't want to put them down, but you can't take a dog or a cat into a nursing home. And so what do you do with the animal? And a lot of, a lot of animal shelters, a ten-year-old dog or a ten-year-old cat don't do well on animal shelters. And so they call us and, and that's when we take them in and we find them new homes. A lot of times these animals come to us and they are not fixed, they are not up to date on shots. And we make sure they're fixed, we make sure they're up to date on shots, we make sure they're heart room tested, FBLB tested, completely healthy and thriving before they go to their new homes. Unfortunately, we do get calls on a daily basis though that we have to turn down just because we don't have anywhere for them to go. And so that's why we kind of came up with the idea to build a shelter. You know, we are based primarily out of Norfolk, just because that's where we've been. Back when we started, we were out of Wayne. We moved our base to Norfolk just because that's where the majority of the need was. But we do honestly, if we get a call, we'll take in the animal. We've gotten a call from, we got two dogs from Kansas City before. We got a dog from Wisconsin before. We get a call, we'll take in the animal if we have a foster for it. We've gotten a chicken before. We've had two horses before, a whole bunch of rabbits before. If we have a foster, we'll take in the animal. But, you know, our biggest thing is that we didn't want to have to say no anymore. We wanted to be able to take in as many animals as possible. And outside of the city of Norfolk, there's really not much. You know, cities like Neill, what do you guys do when you see a whole bunch of dogs and cats running around? You know, there's, there's vets in the area that try to do everything they possibly can to help, but, you know, boarding facilities, like veterinary offices, they do everything they can, but their hands are kind of tied just because there aren't very many areas and very many boarding facilities that can take these animals in. And that's what we want to do. We want to help and we want to provide a resource for areas outside the city of Norfolk. And so this is the service that we, or this is the area. I apologize, it's a little blurry. I'm not the most technology savvy person, so I apologize about that, but, so this is the area that we're looking to service. It is a very wide area, but we think it's possible. We have an amazing foster network and so, you know, if we get full in our facility, we will reach out to our fosters. We are what you call a no-suffer shelter because a no-kill shelter will not take in everything. That's just the way they are. They cannot take in sick or aggressive animals because that would put them in a situation where they would have to euthanize an animal. And that's against what they believe in. And so we are a no-suffering shelter. We don't want to make an animal suffer any more than they have to. If they have a disease or a, any sort of injury that would make them suffer, then that's when we would, we would euthanize them. We have this dog in our program right now. I always, I always tell the story of Ava. She's a Pomeranian and Pomeranians can do a lot of damage, believe me. My fingers have been bit quite a few times from this little, this little girl. But she, she came to us originally because she was being dangled outside of a moving vehicle along Highway 235. And our volunteer, one of our volunteers at the time saw this happen. She honked, 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 tried to get this guy to pull over, finally got him to pull over and essentially bribed this person to give her the dog. So she gave this person, it was a kid, gave her the dog. And this Ava was very, very aggressive. You couldn't even go anywhere around her neck. You couldn't touch her, you couldn't, I mean, you could not go anywhere near her without her actually fighting you. But we knew that she was very treat-driven and we knew that she hadn't been given a fair shake at life. And so we wanted to give her a chance. Well, she was in our program for about six months and we got her adopted from this nice couple. And then they were expecting a child, so a dog that has unpredictable behaviors like that cannot be around a newborn. And so they came back to us and said, hey, she's not going to have a chance in a regular shelter. And so they came back to us and said, hey, can you give her another chance? So she's in our program now. She's on some medication, which has helped chill her out a little bit. And she's about to be adopted again. And this time, she has changed tremendously. I can pick her up. I can, I mean, she still has some quirks, I will say that, but she has turned into a completely different dog. And it's because we have amazing fosters that are willing to take the time to rehabilitate these animals. And that's just one of the stories that makes us a little different. So this right here just kind of gives you an idea of, you know, nationally and then locally, how many people actually own animals. So in Neill, they say, you know, forty, forty-seven percent of people own a dog. So in Neill, that would mean seven hundred and twenty-four people. This is based on statistics back in 2013. And then seven hundred and nine people own cats. And then only three hundred and twenty-six of them were adopted from, and that other statistic is wrong, so, about the dogs. I did the math wrong on that one, but you get the idea. About twenty percent of the, of the people who own dogs and cats are adopted from shelters. This right here, just another example of why we're a little different. We gave Honey a little bit, a little bit more of a shot. She had... She had, when she came to us, she came to us with a, from an individual who, she went into a nursing home. And by the time we got Honey, she had lost the use of her back legs. And she came to us, she needed a surgery that was about eight thousand dollars. And, you know, most people would.